So we will get started. So, welcome everyone. Um, in the case of emergency, um, you can go out either direction and down the stairs. Or there's a refuge. Is it in the elevator?
At the top of the elevator.
The elevators.
Okay.
So it's a place where you can press a call button and that the fire department knows that you're in a. Wouldn't they know where you are when they come?
Okay, cuz I saw the sign and I was like.
It is not much of refuge.
Protected, it is just a designated location for people to.
But in the elevator or?
No, it's at the platform at the top. It's just the floor on the on the top.
What I was asking, there's a sign, it says place of refuge and. I don't always think about this stuff, but I can't go fast right now, so I've been.
If there's an emergency, hit the button right there and don't move.
Okay, got it. Perfect. So that is the instructions. Um, so are there any agenda changes?
Um, I have one, which is you have an agenda item to discuss the official map. Um, we're gonna bump that to your next meeting if that's okay.
That sounds fine.
We're not back.
Uh, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Here and then.
Sure, uh, Ryan Doyle, uh, I did not have time to send you guys an email with the data. Um, I wanted to clarify some of the confusion at the end of of the last meeting. Around renting and taxes. In Vermont, we have homestead and non-homestead taxes. So people who rent are actually paying a higher tax rate. Because the non-homestead tax is higher than the homestead tax and that passes through. Um, because shelter is an inelastic good. Um, any kind of tax that you apply to it will almost always be passed on. From, um, it's kinda like the tariff conversation for having federal leave. So like, in my case, I rent a sixty-eight-year-old home. Because it's a rental property, it contributes nine hundred more dollars a year to the Vermont Education. Fund, for example. Um, and so any. Uh, comparable place, whether it's converted from rental to owned, occupied or vice versa. It will change that kind of a thing. So in terms of education spending and taxes. Uh, anything rental is paying in a higher amount by default. It, um, that is not something within the power of the city to change. That is set by the state. Most states follow something similar. It it does create an equity issue when there is housing scarcity. Because when people want to be in homes they own and maintain them, but can't because of the scarcity and end up renting. Um, not only are they then further displacing people down the line, but they spend a higher percentage of their income on. Their living situation than if they owned, in most cases. Um, there's a lot of nuance to that, but in general. Um, it also means that any price fluctuations can cause greater housing instability. So not just in terms of the taxes going up every year, but because there's a lot more flexibility for landlords to make wider changes. Um, in the amount that they owe. And so. This actually has a lot of negative externalities that society pays for in the form of, in many cases, children. Children moving school districts more often, changing schools, having less stability and being raised in families that have more strained finances and. Higher levels of poverty because they can't get into stable owned housing. Um, and so there's, there's a lot to unpack there. I will try to get around to sending the charts and stuff and a summary. Um, and similarly, the way that we make decisions with land development regulations greatly affects how much. Um, we end up getting versus spending on different forms of development. Uh, I think it was twelve or fifteen years ago, the state of Vermont let us, um. Uh, oh, I lost that tab, uh, allowed us to start enacting a sales tax. Because when you look at very large developments like the Yuma or Lowe's. That those kinds of structures don't actually have a ton of value for their amount of square footage and they have a ton of parking space. All of that values at a very low value per acre. So even though we're consuming a lot and creating a lot of negative externalities with traffic and stormwater runoff and things like that. They end up often costing the municipality more in terms of, um, increased police coverage, changes to fire infrastructure. Wilson was such a great example of that because they did the huge flop so fast. But those pressures still affect us and every other municipality in the state. Um, and so there are some charts I wasn't able to find one cuz I don't know what they are called. Uh, but the next time I see one, I'll send it to you and it sort of gives that diagram of the way density affects the value per acre. And the cost of maintaining infrastructure related to that amount of space and how any form of increased density. Makes the ability to pay for repairs to infrastructure that much more viable. Um, and I will try to get more detailed stuff for you guys to see as you go forward with perpetual iterations of LDRs. Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead. So Tim Barrett, um, and I'm speaking as a resident, um, three things. One was that, uh, at the last meeting, I made a statement about the, uh, the new building in the pit Burlington and I sent an email. I don't know if we can distribute it, but. I I was talking, you were talking about the Juliet balconies and I thought that those were Juliet, but they were not. Because that was just a support platform. It's actually a bigger platform, so you could put a couple of chairs out there. So just so you know, and that's on both sides of the building. I I just wanted to correct that. The second thing was after working the eliminate Vermont, I stood at the corner of Detilio and Market and studied the two buildings right there and. Maybe it's too late to give you this feedback and I know, I think you've talked about it, but it would be so nice if in the new form-based codes you could specify. That there has to be a change in brick pattern. Either, you know, proud or not proud or turning the brick sideways or anything other than just straight brick. Because it it actually ends up giving a texture and and an aesthetic, you know, uh, pleasing view to the eye. So. That's one thing that bothered me right away. The third thing is in reference to Mr. Doyle, um, if a renter's household income, um, qualifies. The state has a renter rebate, uh, at at state income tax time in Vermont.
Thank you. Um, so I'm Tom Bailey. I'm here because I'm chair of the, uh, South Point and Economic Development Committee. Um, and I wanted to alert you, um, I'm on the agenda later, but I wanted to alert you to our May meeting, which is May thirteenth. Um, this is where we will tend to look at workforce. Um, and then the housing, to house the workforce and then development of the housing. Our guests, if we get lots of information from guests, are, um, Kevin Chu from Vermont Futures. And then, uh, Mira Weinberger, uh, from Let's Grow Homes. And then, uh, Evan Longfeld, who we all know and love, uh, who's a developer. So it should be an interesting meeting, the thirteenth at five thirty, right here. Come and enjoy and be educated like us. And then on Ryan's thing, what crossed my mind is Urban Three, if you've heard of it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Love them.
Um, and then, um, I would be surprised if small, uh, strong towns didn't have something. Uh, strong towns. Yeah, okay. Never mind, that's it.
Thanks. Anyone online or not related to the agenda? Just like it's basically just us. Very good. Okay, uh, moving on to item five, which is the LDR amendments, looking at updating.
They had their announcements in Stafford.
Oh, yeah, announcements. Let's do announcements first.
I don't know if there are.
Are there any? Sorry, I was skipping ahead. Any announcements? Any staff report?
A couple of really quick things. Um, one, um. I've been, um, working with folks from UVM associated with, um, something called the Vermont Zoning Atlas. That is part of a larger group that's the National Zoning Atlas. Trying to develop a, um, structure by which somebody who is looking to. Either do research or as a developer, um, understand how, what they can do in different communities without having to go and like. Understand two hundred pages of a given community would be able to see basically a statewide and national map of zoning. Um, there is a draft already up there. Um, however, uh, they did it before you did all your consolidations of districts a few months ago to simplify things. And so we're now, um, working with them to, uh, help figure out how do we keep these things current? And how do we, you know, because it's only as valid as the latest information. So it's been really interesting. And they take, you know, they they have to take some generalizations because. On a statewide and national level, you can't get into every nuance, but getting to sort of a, a, some common level has been, been really interesting and, um. I will, we'll post it on it. Um.
Oh, good me. Where did they get their funding? I'm just curious, you know, the, every time I hear about some nonprofit or I think, oh, God, are they gonna continue to get their funding?
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
Is this gonna be one of those dead programs?
That is one of my concerns, not specifically because of the current administration, but because. I think that there was some funding both on the research side and. Uh, and I I can't remember some of the source, I think some tax sources to sort of get it up and running. But getting up and running is not the same thing as maintaining. So I think that that is a little bit of some of their exploration right now is now that they've done a little bit of it. To whom is it really useful, which can also potentially lead to. You know, maybe the National Realtors Association finds it useful and becomes a funder to keep current. I'm speculating.
Okay, thank you.
Um. The, uh, upcoming in, uh, uh, in sometime in the next couple of meetings, you're gonna be getting a first cut. At some language related to, um, bedrock removal and standards associated with that. Um, it's something the council has specifically requested. Um, we gave a, um, uh. Our city attorney and I gave an overview of the subject to them, I guess, a couple of months ago. Um, or maybe a month ago and talked about how there can be potentially. Um, enhancements and improvements, both in our nuisance ordinance, but also in the LDR. And sort of gave them a, an approach that would, um, both. Be, um, able to address immediate concerns through a nuisance ordinance, but also. Back up at the beginning of a development process to make sure that it's being thought of appropriately. So you'll. Get a, um, first, an overview and a first cut of that in your next meeting or two. And then, um, just to follow up from your last couple of meetings where you were talking about the regional map and the housing targets and all of that. Uh, the, all this information is gonna be presented to the council on this coming Monday night. Um, so the same thing that you, um, heard, um, will go to them and of course, you're all welcome to participate as well. That's what I got.
Any other announcements? Okay, and moving on, good thing we didn't skip that. Um, so now LDR amendments, looking at the updated table of uses.
I just have one, uh, Paul, could you move the camera a little bit toward?
Oh, sure, yeah, sorry.
Kelsey, I. A little bit.
Hi.
There you go. Thanks.
Cactuses on her shirt, if you're wondering.
I don't know, you were in the desert.
You could, Paul, you could zoom in a little bit if you want to, too.
Love the cacti shirt.
There we go.
And a little bit more towards you and Kelsey again. There we go, great.
Are you ready, Paul? Are you a photographer in a prior life, Paul?
Uh, master's degree in television, radio and film.
Fair.
Wow. Paul, I don't think I've ever heard that before.
Yeah, from the New House School at Syracuse.
I love it.
Yep.
Okay, um, so we had some really fun materials in here. I liked.
Yeah.
I guess I, just starting off with one question, how do you see the summary pages evolving? Like, do you see them being like a part of the actual LDRs or like outreach materials are available for folks or just as part of our. Outreach cuz I I think those were kind of nice, um, but maybe not the format that we we often see, so.
Yeah, so I would say, um, definitely the draft, the definition would be in the LDRs. Um, I'm. I think I'm on the fence about the characteristics, um, but I can be convinced either way because there's so few of them. You know, even if each one had half a page, it wouldn't be that much space. Um. Current uses to be included list is more for the amendment process and the same with the sort of scales and limitations and zones. Sort of the second half of everything, um, I think is more about what is it replacing? How is it being regulated? How i- is it being regulated by size or something else? Um, and where do we think it might, might end up being? Um, so the second half is more decision-making now and could potentially be as part of, I mean, it's already in the packet, so it's available to the public, but. Um, could be part of sort of outreach if I, if you wanna explain it to anybody or anything like that, but then. Definitely the definition and potentially the characteristics would be included in the LDR. Yeah.
I know that's probably not where we're starting, but.
No, that's fine.
I thought this thing was really cool.
Yeah, so just starting with, um, what Paul has on the screen, um. Really, where where we're starting is with, and we've talked about this conceptually and this is going over some of the same ground, but making sure we're all on the same page with this. Starting with every use that we can think of and then cutting out the things that aren't including validation. So first being municipal and quasi-public uses, second being other protected uses, so they're not municipal. Um, some of them edge on quasi-public, but they're often run by nonprofits or religious organizations or other things. Um, that category is generally protected. Um, those are protected by state or federal statute about how much locally we can regulate them. Um, spe- other specialized uses, those are kind of, for me, the two ends of the spectrum of things that we wanna keep separately regulated. Because they're not as desirable and things that we wanna keep sep- separately regulated because they're more desirable. Um, and while similar to other use, other commercial uses and characteristics, I'm thinking of childcare in particular. It is somewhat similar to, um, even a retail establishment or a medical office, like there's people coming and going. There's traffic in the morning, stuff like that. Um, having childcare in more locations in the city, closer to homes, closer to businesses. Serves different people, so keeping that separate, I felt personally was important. Um, and then residential and residential-ish uses, so that's the classic permanent housing, but then also. Through the spectrum of supported living, which we, in our current LDRs, we have a few different, um, terms. That are, it's unclear when one thing applies versus another thing. So continuum of care facility, assisted living facility and skilled nursing facility are all functionally similar. Um, one, one facility may actually serve all of those purposes because it, you know. Starts at a fifty-five-plus community and then adds more support and memory care and other things as you, um, progress in in your life.
Can I ask, um, the adult use, is that like a porn shop or is it also like a smoke shop? Or a bar?
Not bar. Um, sm- like tobacco smoke shop?
Those vaping stores?
So it's built used as specifically defined as being the. Porn shop type thing.
Triple X.
Um, and it's specifically defined because the city prohibited them years ago.
Oh, okay.
So in order to be super clear.
Funding is there were, if it.
Right, so to be super clear that it's not allowed, it's defined and then not allowed in any district. As opposed to, in theory, you could also not define it and not put in the regulations, but. You could be challenged to say, oh, it's just a retailer. And so this way it makes it very clear that it's not allowed.
I I was surprised that, um, and I I know you guys brought, uh, called it out in one of the, uh. Description sheets, I'm surprised a gas station is not separated out into one of these uses, just because of the, the, I mean, they all have those massive storage tanks.
Yeah, we've been, we've, I've.
I would have thought the state would have had some sort of designation on.
So the state doesn't have anything in particular like this, so the second one is sort of is protected uses, so things like you can't overrate, overregulate churches. And things like that. Um. Serve, gas station service centers, I've gone back and forth with our development review team a bit about. Gas pumps and like actual fueling versus the store. Because we're ending up in some situations where those, a lot of times are together, but then. Is that gas, or store with a gas station the same or different than a store in a strip mall without a gas station? It's still like the same size store and it's still retail of snacks and drinks and things. Is that the same or different? So that is something.
I was thinking of, you know, the storage tanks underground and any mitigation of that property were to change use.
Oh, sure. So there's, there's definitely sort of brownfields and other like environmental remediation and state-level protections that is. A whole separate.
I I was just surprised it wasn't called out.
Well, I should agree cuz I thought that we had a situation where we basically weren't allowing any new ones in the city. And by putting it just under one of these.
It was under auto-centric, or I'm not trying, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if it's under.
So today we have a rule that says in certain zoning districts, they, new ones can't be, have to be at least a thousand feet apart. Which functionally means that in most areas. They've, they've kind of maxed out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if that's a hundred percent, but generally, yes.
Although if they're there now, they can continue and then sell it to another.
Yep, the use is not.
The use of.
Yep.
It's still allowed, it's not prohibited and then has to be sort of gotten rid of over time. It's still there.
So if we stick it in with one of these bigger categories and take it away as its own use, does that mean? They can go willingly, like wherever that use is.
So, so my, what I was, where I was, and this is all just me, my thoughts and talking with our staff and with you guys in other instances was. Something like a, a service station or a gas station is, would be the motor, a motor vehicle, um, focused. Commercial use, small scale, um, because they're generally sort of smaller scale buildings, smaller scale lots. Um, and then motor vehicle focused commercial is going to be fairly, uh. Tightly regulated about where it can be. It's not going to be allowed kind of everywhere that it can be, that, that like a, just a regular store could be. So having that additional gas use does put it in that motor vehicle, um, use. And then it would be regulated alongside, the same thing as with, uh, as a small garage or or something else of the, of a similar scale. But open to suggestions.
How about propane?
Well, I guess, just to follow up on this, like, I think, um, one of the things I like to, about the way it's written now is that you don't wind up with like. Four gas stations all clustered. I mean, I feel like we have probably a reasonable number already, so.
Yeah.
Would it help if you differentiated between the gas station, uh, that has, uh, a retail and one that doesn't?
Are there any that don't?
Say that the, the ones that don't are pretty much almost gone.
Well, there was that gun shop one, but that's not there.
Well, within the gun shop, they sell.
Oh, yeah, it's retail.
Yeah, I think, I think that they're gone now. The last one was Cagles, I think, that was just a, just a repair shop.
Mm-hmm.
So it can be stores with gas.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So you said that that all, that falls under motor vehicle?
Yep. As I drafted it, but no, definitely.
Well, how about a propane? You know, we're, we're. They have big tanks of propane and they fill up the trucks and then go around. Do we, is that, that's kind of, do we have any? I mean, I know you can go to Ace Hardware and get there's a tank and you.
Just to have one on San Remo Drive.
Right.
I don't know that we currently have any.
Have we disallowed them? Or they just, it hasn't been economically feasible to have a beer?
I think it's the latter.
So we don't need to include them in a specialized use, just in case?
No, I would say no because, um, it would be either depending on. Depending on a few factors, you could place it in either commercial with outdoor storage, outdoor impact or, um, trucking-centric commercial. Cuz if it's truly like the people who bring the propane trucks and then take them to homes and fill up residential tanks at homes and are just going back and forth. I would, that would fall into the trucking-centric use to me and then that's going to be pretty specifically regulated to where that could be.
Alright, cuz that certainly has some na- well, not negative, but potentially, I mean, it's flammable.
And, um, Michael has joined us online.
Um, yeah, I've joined you for the moment because I have a miserable cold which I didn't want to pass on to anybody.
Sorry slash thank you.
If it gets that, if it gets that bad that I start.
Okay, did you have a question, Michael?
Uh, no, I just had that quest, the one question I had, but I'll, I'll, I'll probably have a few more before I bail.
Okay, Colin has his hand up.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, while we're sort of talking, uh, old ability with the truck, uh, yeah, on the question of. It does, I think, look a little. Unclear, yeah, what truck-centric means to me. Uh, we, so we'll get a flow chart and I guess it's, like, I, I. I don't know if, would it, I mean, either A, like, are we trying to like regulate like distribution centers or something? Cuz maybe like that would be better with doing it, or another idea will be. Uh, it's just, I don't know how they predict it, but say like, oh, if you expect your business needs more than, I don't know, ten truck deliveries per day. Therefore, it's truck-centric or something, so therefore a grocery store isn't, but like a FedEx would be. Um, I, I, I recognize this, it's hard to define that. I'm just, at least. It, it, we might need to kind of dig down, so I think, you know, a lot of businesses do have trucks and they don't really know where to draw the line, obviously.
Yeah, so where that's, um, in the, in the draft definition, I included a list of sort of examples. Including freight forwarding, distribution centers, warehousing, truck terminals, logistics services, delivery services, manufacturing or processing facilities. That rely on the shipment of raw materials, materials, finished goods or other items by truck. And I understand that it's, it's hard to draw the line between, you know, is it four trucks a day, is it six trucks a day, is it something else? Um, I had the discussion with some of our, um, permitting team or development review team and. Um, there's all, the conclusion we landed on is there's always going to be a, you know, if you set a line and you say it's five trucks a day. There's, there's going to be someone who comes in and says like, oh, I have six, like, isn't that close enough? Can't you put it low? So, you know, things like that come in constantly, so it's, it's nice to be able to put in a number with things. But then that number, people will still play with the number.
I, I got you.
So trying to define things more in terms of sort of general business practice. And business goals, like what is the core of the business, um, is really where. I try, I tried to write this definition, um, cuz for example, you know, something. Something like, uh, uh, so like a restaurant that has delivery. You know, they send out a couple of, of cars an hour, ten cars an hour to go deliver pizzas or something. That's gonna be a restaurant and that's gonna be consumer-facing commercial. But there are places that, you know, in more urban places than here, you'll have a commercial kitchen. That is a ghost kitchen for ten restaurants, where they all work in the same space and the cars are just going out constantly. That's going to be basically a delivery hub that is more, just more defined by, um, the traffic. Uh, that's not a great example cuz it's not trucks, it's not heavy trucks, but it's, it's somewhere in that kind of distinction between. Are you a, are you a business that gets truck deliveries and sends trucks out? A few times a day, a few times a week, or are you a trucking business? Kind of defining it one way or the other. And there's going to be, there's going to be conflict, but there already is in the way that we define things now. This is actually one that's. Um, most of the things I listed as examples are currently separately listed uses. And drawing the line and they're allowed in different districts from each other. They're not even all allowed in the same districts, so. Our team trying to draw the line between what's a trucking terminal and what's a distribution center. Is even more difficult than when we're trying to have fewer broader categories.
So, so where does storage end up in all that? Does it depend on the size of the storage, like hardware houses or more trucking-related versus. Smaller storage or more vehicle services?
Small, small warehouses that support another business are specifically accepted. Um, from the definition of trucking-centric cuz situations where like you have a shop that's in a downtown area. And then you have a warehouse that's two miles away where you keep extra stuff. You know, that happens fairly frequently. You know, you might be running a van back and forth, you know, a couple of times a week, a couple of times a day, but that would not be. That warehouse is specifically accepted from trucking-centric. Um.
Ex- accepted, it's, it's not, it's not part of trucking-centric.
Yes, um, because of the scale, cuz it would be pretty small and serving, um, likely one business, one small business.
So that general commercial then?
Yes. Yep.
Michael, you've got your hand up?
Yes, uh, since I'm, I missed the first seven minutes, uh, are we, have we finished, uh, the items that are in the memo?
No, no. We're, we're working through, we're under item five and we're, we've essentially just started by looking at this. This slide here.
Yeah, and we can actually, if you wanna move to the next one, this may answer some maybe or, or cause more other questions.
Oh, that was fun.
This, this was really good.
It was like a game, it's like, oh.
Crazy flowchart, um.
That was really, it worked.
It was a walk on ground, but it worked.
Yeah. Um, it was originally drafted as me trying to figure out if the categories worked, um, so it's good to hear that it makes some sense as you go through it. Um, the idea being is you start at the top left, um, and you're effectively shedding off. The different uses that have higher impact to neighbors and the community and ending up with the sort of. You go, you're kind of going in two directions that you, you run through that, um, chart.
So. So have you dealt with the, uh, required updates? So have you dealt with the required updates that are in the memo?
No.
Are you gonna go back to that?
We're.
We're on item five, Michael.
We're on number five.
Okay.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Yep, yep, okay.
We're just starting it.
Alright. I'm with you.
Okay, good, um, so generally speaking, do the categories, we've talked about this, this, but just returning to it. Do the categories seem to make sense to you and I'd love to hear, like Helen mentioned propane, um, distribution centers. Is there, is there something that you, when you were reading this, you were like, oh, where does blank fit? Like this feels like it's between these things and some of it is going to have to be decided kind of on the fly with the details of any particular business. But the idea is, is that each of these purple bubbles has somewhere in the same range of impact. On neighbors of the same quality and the same sort of level of impact um as other businesses in that category. Um, the.
Controlling for scale.
Control and for scale, yeah, so some of them have, would have scale um components to them. The idea being that if you have a um, a bagel shop and you wanted to change it to a. You know, a pizza rest, a sit down pizza restaurant, like it's not going to change things that dramatically um between those two uses. That you don't, that you would need to go through and get a site plan amendment and all of these things. But if you were gonna change it from a bagel shop to a, you know.
Gas station.
Gas station, sure. The hard ones. Um, then you would need, when it's truly a different impact on the people around you, then that's when you'd be triggering site plan amendment. Um, the idea is that you have fewer of those boundaries between uses. So you've actually hopefully less ambiguity, because you're not trying to decide between, oh, well, is it a restaurant short order? Or a restaurant like regular, it doesn't matter in this in this schema.
One of the things we've had as data points for a long time is for many years, we've had a definition called the shopping center. Which the Blue Mall, U Mall, um, the Talbot's Plaza have been that category. And businesses just come and go and functionally, it all kind of operates the same. And we've never had to make those divisions within those buildings, but then you go to somewhere else and they've only got two businesses and they swap out to. Similar and they've had to go through a whole process to change that. Um, whereas a business coming and going in the blue mall has not had to, so that's one of our major data points. The other one being our form based code, which is sort of double down on some of the same.
Okay, Colin, go ahead.
I I I had one quick question on the last uh slide, um. Maybe I wasn't exactly sure if this sign that's also out of our, the scope of the planning commission's powers. Um, with 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 regards to cannabis dispensary being a specialized use, I understand that there was definitely reasons for like you wouldn't want them anywhere, of course. I guess I'm a little confused in what circumstances you'd want, like say, have a liquor store. Or like a place that sells beer for offsite consumption, where you'd want that, but you wouldn't want a place that sells cannabis for offsite consumption. So I guess I was a little wondering the discrepancies, like liquor stores or like any alcohol consumption. Things isn't a special use, but cannabis is, uh, but it's. Yeah.
Yeah, by state statute, um cannabis retail sales is an opt in provision. Um, so South Burlington City Council and um public have not moved forward with.
Gotcha.
Um, pursuing any kind of cannabis retail uh to be allowed in South Burlington. And frankly, there's been minimal interest, at least from what we've heard, um, you know, people calling to ask, there's been a little bit, but not very much. Um, so that is something allowing cannabis retail is separate and it's.
Gotcha.
Has to be specifically allowed um by action outside of this body. And um, to be completely frank, the cannabis dispensary and cannabis cultivation definitions are also um remain separate. Because it's actually, it's going to be a bigger project to rework the definitions that we currently have that are based on the medical marijuana system. Um, and that was just, it's just another thing with the moving uh landscape of cannabis. And the guidance on the uh state level rules on cannabis in in, I mean, in Vermont. So it is just for the moment, a pin put in it and removed from from this discussion. Partially because it hasn't, it hasn't been allowed by the council and partially because the state level landscape is still kind of changing a bit. So it would be a standalone project that we'll pursue in the future.
Okay, thanks, gotcha.
Sure. Okay, um, so I had.
I guess I have a question about this flow chart, are you thinking that this flow chart might appear like in the LDRs or is this kind of like to help us think through this process?
That's another one.
I have different comments about this.
Yeah, I think it is, this one in particular is more for us in this process. And then the, cause what I don't want and what is uh some, we run into this problem in the current LDRs. Cause just over time amendments pile on amendments and things happen in in a set of regulations where if we had the draft definitions written somewhere. And then we had this chart written somewhere and three words were different between those things, people, you know, find that discrepancy and wanna. Argue that there's ambiguity and a whole thing, so when we're defining uses, I would like to define it one time. Um, and this flow chart, while it's not strictly defining uses, it is kind of defining uses by kind of, it's not this, it is this going through the chart.
I think this is helpful and since it won't be in the LDRs, I have no.
Okay. So I'd like to actually skip the um, the zoning districts chart for a second and just go hmm.
Oh.
Uh, go down to, yeah, to these pages, these are just questions that are sort of my running list of questions. And I didn't wondered if anyone had any feedback about these, some are big, some are very small, um. But if we, if anyone has, I don't need to go sort of bullet by bullet, but if anyone has any thoughts. Um, that would be helpful in any of these things, I would love to hear it. Um, first is I am bad at titling things. And just, I have learned this is a major weakness in myself, I can't come up with good titles um for anything. So if anyone has better titles for any of these uses, I would be happy to hear them. Um, sort of the second general question is the ones, a few of them have scales, sort of small, medium and large. A few, one or two have small and large, so motor, motor vehicle focused commercial only has two scales and how I wrote it. Um, in an attempt to not be overly sort of slicing and dicing with the uses, cause that's what we're trying to get away from. Um, but if anyone had any thoughts about that and um.
What page are you, what page are you on?
It's right after that chart.
It's after the zoning districts chart.
Page, page fifteen.
So. Since you, your question is, do we need a medium scale?
Yeah.
Uh, I I guess the answer to me, if I understand this is, um, we have a small scale.
Yes.
And then everything else, and if we're, eh eh, and that, just to make it easier. I guess that's okay with me not to have, so what's a medium scale, is that a hundred cars on the lot?
Right, the logic, the logic, so some of the other ones like retail makes sense to me to have three. Because I can logically think of three pretty distinct scales of like small business, you know. Media like pharmacy sized store, like a CVS side store and then a grocery store, like that's pretty distinctly three different scales. Um, motor vehicle focused commercial, I was thinking of as, you know, gas station, auto, um. Small auto rental mechanic shop, body shop, things like that are are in the same ballpark of scale. And then you leap up to um dealerships.
Mm-hmm.
Like you really don't have much in between, um, and unless anyone disagrees, that's, you know, go ahead, but.
Well, we have some small, or maybe they're in Williston.
I think they're, I was thinking down with Sheldon, uh, Williston, but I think that's Williston.
Is that Williston?
Yeah.
What's like Handy Motors and what's the place next to Handy Motors?
So if you go down that hill and you cross the stream.
No, 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 before that, before that, right across from uh Beta.
You're like where Nissan used to be?
Yeah, 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 I I, when I was thinking of that question, medium scale, to me, I thought of those as medium scale.
Hmm.
They're not key motors, they're, you know, I I I don't know, I don't know if you would do it by square footage amount of vehicles, I don't know.
Yeah, so I had, I had written it as acres of of land, because generally these car, the car dealerships have surface parking. And that would be the biggest in my mind um impact on others is seeing an ocean of of asphalt and all, you know, cars on the lot. Um, I was trying to figure out a way, cause currently our auto dealerships are pretty tightly regulated um to be allowed in C one auto. And then a couple of other very select spaces, um, trying to fold in auto dealerships to this use. Category, but then also. Be able to regulate them separately by calling them large. Um, so I'm not sure in my mind if. If you draw the line in the right place for the number of acres, like you're not gonna have a mechanic shop that has four acres of land likely. Um, but you could have a small dealership that that does. And I'm fine with small dealerships being regulated with larger dealerships, because there's still auto dealerships and that's how the use is regulated today. Um, but that's how I was.
Motorcycle, those tend to be.
Motorcycle.
Small, but not large.
Mm-hmm.
There's one on, um, I I don't know if that's Essex already, but. Um, I'm right on read fifteen.
That's Essex, the Harley.
Oh, yeah.
Harley dealership and stuff like that.
There's a um.
That's, that's quite a bit different, cause mostly they're not outdoors, they're more indoors, so would that be small?
Probably.
Okay.
There's an impound lot on um behind the airport.
Mm-hmm.
I assume that would fall into this category too, um, and it's sort of.
Yep.
Not big, not small, it's probably big, but then I'm not sure you'd wanna see it have a large car dealership. Take over an area back there, maybe it wouldn't.
Um, Colin and then Michael?
Uh, one just a potential suggestion on terms, is it clear that small electric vehicles are not included in the motor vehicle commercial? Uh, I do, the definition that's drafted does look, you know, pretty solid and I would say it does seem to be pretty clear. The only thing I was wondering though is, would it make sense not to discount the work in writing all of that? To instead of defining motor vehicle here, just refer to the state statute, cause they kind of define motor vehicle. And then like if that, because I I could see the situation where it like creating more work for us down the line. If like, oh, some new type motor vehicle comes up or there's some new regulatory framework and our definition of motor vehicle is subtly different. From the state's definition, that could potentially cause some confusion, um. Not to say that, I mean, perhaps we don't want use the state's definition, I just know they have some, they're pretty specific, you know, with the D and B regulations. And that, I wonder if that might make it a little less work for us, kind of being being very clear, might be more air taken and exceptions, but uh.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Colin, it doesn't, our definition doesn't include, the way that it's written now in the draft, it includes a few more things than the state definition, so. Um, things like jet skis or boats, there's like different ways that things are defined at the state level. So what I was trying to do is make, write things in plain language at our level. In a way that doesn't conflict with the state, but then doesn't require us to refer to, you know, say, go see the state definition of. You know, motor vehicle and all of the very specific, you know, policy style wording that comes at at that kind of state level definition. Um, trying to make it more accessible, but I definitely hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Gotcha, got it.
Well, Michael was gonna go now.
Uh, hang on a sec, yeah, um. I'm looking at the uses, excuse me, um agricultural and construction equipment. And then mobile home and RV boat storage, wouldn't that be better fit in? Commercial with an out, with outdoor impact?
Um, my opinion was no, but you can have a different one.
Well, yeah, but.
To me, to me, there's not a lot of difference between a small motorhome and an F three fifty. In sort of impact on, you know, what it looks like, where it's located, um. And but it is more different from something like a lumberyard or a plant nursery than those two things are from each other.
Mm-hmm.
That was the, that was my logic.
Could be pretty heavy, eh, heavy duty equipment for agricultural and construction equipment. Um, and then and mobile home and RV boat storage, there's some pretty sizable examples of that. Uh, around, maybe not in South Burlington, but if you go on route, if you go on uh Williston Road towards. Um, Sheldon or 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 um, you'll, you'll see some big RV storage. I mean, RV um, repair and service and sales are at this huge. Uh, wouldn't be nice to have. Close to home. And uh, what else, I I was asking about motorcycle, auto, auto, motorcycle repair services. Can be very noisy if they're close to ri- uh, any, any residential area. So those are my questions about on this one. I don't know if anybody else has an opinion on it, excuse me. Um, that's on page, uh, page nineteen, I guess, yeah.
Some what self, self regulating, because they take a lot of space, so why would you put them in South Burlington?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't know.
Well, and they'd be regulated the same way that a, I mean, otherwise mechanic shop or house, like it's not like we're saying to put it in something completely different. And if it's large, like say it's, you know, um, a cat rental, like excavators and things, that would fall into large scale. Motor vehicle, um, commercial, so then.
There is some of that, well, I guess that's.
Well, agricultural and and construction equipment is large, it's, it's heavy duty stuff.
Yep.
Right, but the one.
So it'd be, it'd be scaled well by scale.
The one that's in Williston, when you go into, you know, Home Depot and stuff, it has a lot of equipment, but it's not. As big as a car dealership.
So it could be large.
No, the, the machine, each of the machines are huge, but they don't have three hundred of them.
Right.
It's kind of feeling like you don't want the medium scale, you kind of either want something nice and small and well contained.
Yeah.
Or you want it regulated like the large, I mean, that's kind of what I.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So regulated as large.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Colin, did you something else?
Uh, one, uh, what is quickly, uh, what is a farm in this?
What is a?
Farm is defined at the state level, um, so.
Okay, okay.
If you qualify as a farm at the state level, then you're a farm.
Okay, so I guess, should it be in that like tall, like is it any of these uses? But uh, or I guess, yeah, okay, so I I I uh, I guess I wasn't sure exactly how that's being distributed. Uh, but I guess if a farmer knows, farmer knows.
It's tricky Colin, because it actually farm goes, it it's above all of these, it's exempt from local review entirely.
Yeah.
Okay, I.
If it qualifies as a farm, it's not even subject to zoning at all.
Gotcha, okay.
So anything else on motor vehicles specifically?
Well, that's the, the third bullet point, um, I think it's important not to ever refer to e-bikes, e-scooters. Or both police scooters as vehicles, because that gets very confusing for a lot of people. You know, who think e-bikes are vehicles, cause they're not. Um, but then there's some motor scooters.
It's a fine line.
More vehicles. Yeah, I, I think the best way to figure that out, does it require a license plate, you know?
Yeah, I've seen some e-bikes that were souped up. Yeah, I mean.
A license. There's a fine line there for sure, I think that depends on output, you know, power output, I think mostly. But I think it's just better just not to refer to them as vehicles, cause that really confuses.
Yeah, I. It it gets weird, cause I think the ones you're talking about, Duncan, I totally mean, those aren't legal, is the, is sort of the the truth thing. Like, there is a pretty like strict definition of what you can and can't sell as an e-bike in this country. And those really, really powerful ones, they're on the roads, I I get it, but they're not, they're not legal. So because of what weird how you're regulating them, you can't actually legally sell them in this country, or rather they're off road use only, whatever that means. Um, but it is defined, it's just people ignore definitions sometimes.
Okay, can we move on to the truck centered?
Sure.
Anything on that one?
Actually, I think the title's not that bad.
Not that bad.
That's all I, that's all I need.
It's pretty good, Kelsey.
Thanks, thank you, um, yeah, I talked around a few things, but truck centered felt like it was conveying.
That does a good job telling you it, the business relies on truck traffic.
It's not just commercial with, I, my original working thing was commercial with trucking and that was just.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear that it's not just trucks gonna come.
Right, cuz every every commercial use has a truck once of some scale, once in a while.
Feel like everybody's house does.
Yeah, exactly.
I had a, I had a question on on the wording. Where you uh say uh manufacturing and processing facilities that rely on shipment of. It would be better to say they rely on regular delivery of.
May maybe, not necessarily cuz it's, I thought again about that is it's, if you have, if you're a manufacturer and you're. You know, making things and you're sending things out constantly, you're also. Like.
You're shipping.
You're shipping.
Yeah, whereas delivery can be a smaller vehicle.
Right, well, delivery almost sounds like it could be part, either it's a small thing that you're selling or it's a part. For a manufacturing plant.
Right.
Which is very different than the final product that they're shipping out.
Well, they they rely on on the shipment of raw materials, finished goods and other items via truck. If they're manufacturing something, they're gonna, they're gonna rely on the delivery of of raw materials and things like that, so. It's a mix. I don't think it's clear that what that means.
So what happens when you start getting delivery by drone?
It says, it says by truck.
Okay, so.
Don't overcomplicate it, it it's it specifies via truck.
Yep.
I know, but we'll have to change it eventually.
So consumer facing commercial.
Yeah, so um these three are. The generally the some of the lighter impact things um in certain ways and heavier in other ways, um consumer facing commercial. Is sort of a catchall for anything that you would think of as like I'm, you know, you go to a city on vacation, what are the things you're using? You're using retail, you're using restaurants, you're using coffee shops, you like, anything that draws consumers. Um would be consumer facing commercial, and I just wanna make sure that that came across fairly clearly in the definition. And again, that's the one that has scale, so that's a difference between, you know.
There's there's a fine line between that and clinic. You know, medical.
Well, medical and social services is is a different of it, I know it's a different one, but a lot of them occur in exactly the same kind of facility.
We've had this currently as a challenge of medical office versus personal service. Of, you know, where does a esthetician fall? Um where does a psychologist versus a psychiatrist fall?
Well, they kind of, they overlap cuz they they can both happen in the same facilities.
We're never going to end up with uses that are completely have clean boundaries where it's, you know. In a hundred percent of cases, it's obvious what side of the line, we're just kind of doing the best we can, and part of the logic of this. Change is reducing the number of boundaries because you're reducing the number of uses, may reduce the number, hopefully reduces the number of uh. That kind of question. So then actually skipping to general commercial for a second, the intention and the way that hopefully the flow chart showed it is that is kind of a catchall for things that. Don't either have outdoor impact or trucking or aviation or motor vehicles kinds of impacts. And it also doesn't have the um consumer draw of of other things, so it's kind of everything that lands in between. So stuff like we were thinking things like um very small manufacturers that work out of a single um. You know, a single.
Like a sign.
Industrial space.
Or something.
Oh, what?
A sign shop.
Yeah, exactly, that kind of thing where like you may have customers that come, but they're generally ordering something like. You have, maybe they have appointments, like it's not drawing in people off the street. Um but it does have a cup, you know. It catches, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that fall in that middle section um that don't have the impacts of other things. The other intention is this is not something that has. A high level of impact in any direction, it's not drawing a lot of consumer traffic, it's also not drawing trucking traffic, it doesn't have a lot of outdoor impact. Um but it's, you know, not.
Typically requires less parking, it's about the only big difference.
Yep.
Less parking.
Right.
Unless you have a lot of individuals working there, but aren't consumer facing cuz.
Right, and that could be, you know, you have five people.
A lot of offices.
Come in and then they leave.
And a lot of businesses are internet based.
Right.
And that's gonna fall into.
Yep, and so and then the third.
They're consumer facing, the consumers don't come there.
Correct, correct. Um and then the third question on this page is, we have a working definition of corporate accommodations.
Should we save that?
We can save.
Let's save the corporate accommodations piece till we get to the next item on the agenda. Um Michael, do you have something on one of these?
Um on medical. Going uh medical and so. Medical and social services, where would hospitals fit?
They're uh protected use, aren't they? They're a separate use, Michael.
Any anywhere.
Our municipal or quasi-public uses, hospital.
Okay. And uh have you got, have you, you haven't looked at aviation uses yet?
No, no, we haven't gotten there, we hadn't gotten to medical and social science services.
Okay, let's move on to that next page then. Yeah.
Are you waiting for me now?
Well, I guess you can talk about medical now, now we're on that.
No, it's okay, I I've said said what I was gonna say about that and uh. It was answered, no, my other only question about aviation uses, what should we add, a parking structure is something that's allowed there? In aviation uses cuz we have it already. Yeah. We already have it, so maybe we should allow it.
So that would be considered, to to me, that's considered an airport facility.
Right, parking for a thing, whether it's underground or structured or surface.
The use is not the parking, the use is the aviation.
Right, unless the use is the parking, meaning like. In some other cities, a private lot where it's like all you do is rent and we have historically prohibited those.
Yeah, we have some surface stuff that people can do, but it's not.
Well, that would apply to restaurants as well, that they aren't really aviation operations.
Um Donna?
Yeah, um I think one one thing I noted as I was reading through here is, um there's emergency applications of. For buildings. Um you know, in in emergency and or, you know, you have a flood or something like that, and all of a sudden, you have to relocate people. And you might have to do that to a commercial facility or something like that where there's enough space. To put people, I mean, it's happened in a lot of cities where they just didn't have places to evacuate people to. How does that impact this?
Emergency shelters are separately, they're protected use that are separate separately regulated.
But this wouldn't necessarily be an emergency shelter, or or do they have to, does each? City or town have to have designated emergency shelter, cuz I don't know that we have.
Emergency plan identifies.
There's a state, there's a state level definition of emergency shelter that includes temporary use of other spaces.
Oh, okay.
It's recently came in, it just came in last year, it's a new law.
State law, yes.
It's one of the municipalities must incorporate.
Okay, great.
But then in our emergency management plans, it identifies them, it lists them.
Cuz you're supposed, you're supposed to use things like school, schools, city hall stuff first before you go to.
But in in Emory Summit.
Yep, in an order.
The National Guard probably has a lot of facilities like that too.
Right.
Okay, anything else on these items here?
So just one thing I wanted to talk about for a quick second is I originally had commercial with outdoor impact. And didn't have commercial outdoor recreation as two separate things. And I ended up separating them and I am on the fence about whether that's necessary or not, um the logic is, is that something like. Hypothetically, you have a private disc golf. Facility or something, that's not the same density of impact as something like a lumberyard. Um but if you had a like a go-kart track, that'd be outdoor recreation. Motor vehicle, it would become, you'd have to put it into motor vehicle category, so how many things actually fall in commercial outdoor recreation?
Golf courses.
Golf course, yeah, so of our current uses.
We had a um.
Bike.
We had a. We had like a, a thing a couple of years ago, like a pump, like a pump track outdoor.
Yeah, so I had written as examples, um golf courses, pump tracks, mountain biking or Nordic ski centers, golf. Disc golf courses, swimming pools, mini golf courses, archery grounds and similar.
Outdoor skating.
And then specifically, well, that was just, it's just a list of examples, and then specifically. Dirt cr- dirt bike and motocross, go-karts and similar for motorized recreational vehicles would be motor vehicle focused.
And I I think today we prohibit those, don't we? We took the, I thought we took those out of the definition of outdoor recreation. We used to have a definition that said, that allowed, that defined go-karts as being in there and we took them out because we didn't wanna have a go-kart track.
What about the private tennis and pickleball courts?
That would be private outdoor recreation, that would be this, commercial outdoor recreation.
But that's commercial outdoor.
Yep, unless it was something like, I think hypothetically, the the Y. You know, I know it's in Burlington, but some and and so uh uh entity like the Y had outdoor tennis. If you're a nonprofit, like maybe there's a different thing there, but that's just.
Right, I was thinking of the edge in South Burlington.
Would be this, yeah. The other thing to point out um is that I'm. With talking with our development review staff, having more than one use on a property is something that they're comfortable with, so hypothetically, it's like. You know, you have your commercial outdoor recreation space and then you have, you know, your in your or your golf simulator. On the same property as your retail shop. And those are, you know, maybe they're related, but they're sort of organized separately, we can have them. You don't have to fold every possibility into one use, you can say like, yeah, you've got this use and you've got that use.
Well, residential.
New and exciting.
Well, even residential, I mean, you know, even even the downtown um. They planned that to have a lot more facilities as part of the departments.
Yeah.
Um swimming pools.
Right.
All that stuff was was in there.
Right, and the flip side too is is if something falls two things in the same category now, we don't need to have that artificial divide, like. Um there was an example that came up where they, the site had been permitted, the building had been permitted for. A certain use in, you know, three thousand square feet and a certain other use in the remaining. You know, seven thousand square feet of a ten thousand square square foot building, I'm making that up, and they said, well, I need to. I want, this use is doing well and I wanna expand it, and this use is doing less well and I wanna sort of make it smaller. They would have to go through site plan to be able to do that, where now if those two things fell into the same. New category, you you could move that line um without having to go come back, so that's sort of the idea.
Let me ask rhetorical question, does it complicate things by having this as a separate category or no?
Um I don't think that we're gonna run into a lot of this coming up, so it doesn't really complicate things um. I think it's okay, I wanted to have fewer categories instead and not, you know, kind of keep splitting them, but it felt like. Something like a gardener supply is a different impact.
Than Vermont National. I think the other thing is that where you might want to have a more different, like where you'd wanna have a lumberyard versus where you'd wanna have a tennis club.
Yeah.
May not be the same places.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm finally having a separate category, I'm a big fan of outdoor recreation.
Really?
Really.
Um okay, so we have some questions online, um we're gonna go alphabetical cuz I wasn't watching close enough, so Colin and then Michael.
Uh quick, quick clarification, um. The uh I noticed that archery range is in uh commercial outdoor recreation.
Yeah.
Uh is shooting range covered separately somewhere cuz I'm not, I'm not seeing it in this document?
Um I I believe, but I I've run out of minutes to triple check this, you cannot discharge a firearm in the city of South Burlington.
Okay, okay, got it, got it.
Legally anyway.
Well, you're.
Legally.
Yeah, legally.
Thank you for the caveat, Colin.
Thank you.
And what? So one one other thing, I I I I definitely, I agree that I I I agree with you on. Commercial outdoor recreation being separate from commercial with outdoor impact. I noted on the draft use cases so that commercial outdoor recreation essentially, it's strictly more restrictive than. The uh commercial uh, sorry, commercial outdoor impact has more places to lie and everywhere that you. Like it's sort of a strict subset where you could put commercial outdoor recreation. I guess I want to fully understand that, like for example. Is like, so you you can't, for example, put a disc golf course in a low scale neighborhood zoned area. And I guess I was cur- curious if that's what, i- i- if that's that, and that will clearly that's intentional, but what the rationale behind sort of. Narrowing it down, being very speci- so specific where you could put these things. Even saying it's all this, yeah.
To be completely honest, Colin, it was something that I was, I put in as basically the last thing before the packet went out. Um I I put in sort of to me, the obvious cases of where it would be allowed and have, you know, kind of no problem with it. Um very open it to, open it to, open to it being allowed in other places um. It's just something that I didn't come up with a staff recommendation in time for this packet, so if for if we have specific. Um places that you're happy to have them, that's that's great. The other thing is that this is specifically commercial outdoor recreation. Um in my head, that's part of the rationale is that you would want to have public outdoor recreation in in places like. Neigh neighborhoods and things, and that maybe commercial recreation is is reserved for a smaller subset of areas, but. That was just my my initial thought on things.
Gotcha. Alright, well, I've had off, but thank you.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I um on corporate um accommodation, uh you've got a, at the beginning, you've got a list of.
Oh, yeah, we're we're holding off till the next agenda item on that one, if that's okay.
Uh okay.
Yeah, sorry, did we just have a bigger discussion on that coming up?
I'll leave my, I'll leave my hand up, you can just ignore it for now.
I never could even find the hand.
Well, anything else on these items?
Well, just just to address Kelsey's issue, are, you know, are public and commercial. Recreation really different? I don't think they are, I mean, a good example is in Williston, cuz that had been private, you know, whole Catamount. Family Center, that had been private and now it's public, same exact facility, same exact use, it's not, it's not really different, how?
How did that happen?
Where would you, you know.
I I I guess.
Where would it be really different?
Profit versus nonprofit?
But but how would that have a difference on where you put it?
Well, I wonder if the example that you're giving of Catamount went from private to being public. If it was the inverse, would it always be appropriate? Because presumably a public could be pretty much anywhere.
Not if it were in a park, you would think.
Public could be pretty much anywhere, right, so in this instance, it went from private to public, so it's not a big. Deal that it became public, if something was gonna be a private entity only for certain. Individuals, does that change the conversation as well?
It's open to anybody, you just had to pay a day fee, it was still commercial.
I I understand, but I'm saying.
It wasn't a private.
That one, that location is probably appropriate for both.
Right.
Are there locations where it would be appropriate for public but not private? And I guess that's the question.
Like one thing that I've heard is, and I've only played pickleball a couple of times and I quite like it, and I think it's hard to get. Court space, so it's very popular, um but I think it's quite loud. It makes me wonder, I think.
Those balls.
I know, they're no.
Balls is a problem.
Um so I guess it's true, I'm not completely sure that every single thing on this list is interchangeable in every location.
Right.
But does it matter that it's public or private?
Well, I don't know that it matters if it's public or private, but I do think if it's public. Um citizens can come forward and say, you know, we don't think this is an appropriate use of our park, there's there's kind of a bigger process.
But let me give you an example, so Red Rocks Park, somebody, an organization comes in and wants to build a disc golf course down there, and they're gonna charge a fee. Is that appropriate on a, in a public park?
Well, maybe. Where it is, but but then again, I know if you, if it's a snack bar by the beach.
I don't know, if somebody owned a parcel of land. You know, on the lake shore, and they decided that they wanted to offer disc golf.
No, that's, I'm talking about in a, in one of our parks.
Well, I know, but I think it's all based on who owns. Well, I know, but I think it's all based on who owns the land. If it's a public land, then you can't have a private business, you know. Charging money to do something on pri- on public land.
To me, to me, the neighborhoods, especially the L S N, the M S N and the Q C P, um. There's limited space, there's limited land for, that can be used for sort of open parkland and park spaces and to have a. Allow a commercial facility, um, you know, you buy three houses in, in the orchards and you tear them down and you put something, I don't know what you put in there. That you have, that neighbors have to pay a fee to, to use is, to me. Putting something that may be a destination draw in the middle of a neighborhood where it should be. Um, an open and free asset for everybody in that neighborhood to use. So it's.
Or left as housing.
Or left as housing. So it's, it's either, to me, it's, you know, are you drawing something, are you drawing people regionally to something?
Oh boy.
Um, that's commercial and has a specific use, or are you, um. In the middle of a neighborhood allowing some, somebody to charge money for access. It does, it just didn't sit right with me, but that was my own.
And here's, here's an example that, you know, a good one to argue that is, what if, um, developer puts in a dog park? Nice fenced in dog park and it's for residents only, but you know, you can pay. You know, for a pass to bring your dog to that dog park.
See, I still disagree with that.
I don't, I mean, so if it's permitted as part of a private development, you can't charge for use of it? Or can you restrict it to use by only residents?
I don't know how you'd enforce that, either way.
That'd be pretty tough.
You're not gonna have someone standing at the gate. It's not like, like there are places like in Massachusetts where there's a town beach and you have to have a parking sticker and whatever, but like it's a lot different to, to regulate a park. Than to regulate, you know, people walking into the dog park enclosure. Um, we can have more conversation about this. I know it's, it's past eight, so. Just, we can.
I just had a question in terms of the commercial outdoor recreation and, and just. And maybe we don't need to deal with it now, but when the boathouse thing at Red Rocks gets rebuilt, so it's usable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what if they wanted to have a snack bar? And the snack bar would have to charge something for the hot dogs or whatever they wanna sell. And that would be, you know, a limited, um, seasonal kind of thing.
I think from a zoning perspective, the way that you might, would tackle that is, that's in a park zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
And you would allow for, say, consumer facing retail in a park district. Of course, council has to approve such a thing.
Right.
So the use is allowed, but of course, the owner has to also allow it. So that's the way that I think you might.
Okay.
Do that. And, uh, Karen's Arena would be another example of that, right? So you could say that is a commercial entity inside of a park. Um, it is allowed to exist from the zoning, but also needed approval from the council to have that agreement.
Okay.
Um, so that's probably the way that that would get tackled. And I, and I, just to close the conversation, I think Helen, what you were talking, or whoever was talking about the, the re- Jessica, the recourse. That somebody has, outdoor recreation might be very quiet, but it might be fairly loud. And separating the public from the private, the public, there's a recourse.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you don't like the sound of this thing, you can lobby your council to limit its hours or remove it. If it's private. It's private. So if somebody set up a, um, uh, skate park. And it was a private skate park and they were operating, you know, city has some tools around nuisance, but they're, they're blunt tools.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to, it's a public park and we can say it shuts at X hour.
Okay, anything else on this before we move on to the accommodation piece? Okay, um, let's move on to item number six, um. We have talked about this a few times and have newly just gotten some feedback from the Economic Development Committee. Is there something, Paulie or Kelsey, you wanted to say before we jump in?
Um, I mean, honestly, what I, I try to set this up, so what I have to say is in the memo. Uh, so, and I, I feel silly being like, well, does anyone have questions or what do you wanna talk about? But that's. How I try to set this up so that you all can sort of digest what I have to say instead of just listening to me say it off, off the fly.
Can just say no. That's fine. Totally fine. Great.
Thank you for the permission.
Wasn't trying to just put you on the spot there.
I'll just anxiously jabber on for a few minutes.
We have, so there are some questions in here, but we also have a really great, um, response letter. From the Economic Development Committee. Um, Michael, you have your hand up?
It's all, um, carry on, uh, when I, when you're done with your speech, I'll.
Okay, I don't need to make any more speech.
Okay, well, I did have, uh, um, a couple of comments on this, excuse me. Um, under current uses, you've got bed and breakfast, hotel, hotel extended stay. Um, are, are you going to, uh. Kelsey, you're gonna add corporate accommodation to that list?
So currently it is not separately regulated. Those are the three hotel, um, regular hotel extended stay and bed and breakfast. There is no current. Definition for corporate accommodations. So the only, that list is just showing what of the current uses would be, could be folded into the definition of accommodations. Um.
Yeah.
We, I wrote the, I wrote the corporate accommodations draft, um. That I thought was responsive to OnLogic's request, but then after a further conversation, a, their request from about a year and a half ago, almost two years now.
Yeah.
Um, after a further comment, uh, conversation with OnLogic, they, um, ru- had, they had reviewed that. Definition, that draft definition, and they had other thoughts about what they would like to be allowed to do in. On their property and in that area. And that's when I asked them to put something else in writing, which is, um, I hope you all received today. I sent out that letter.
Yeah.
Um, so I asked OnLogic to kind of update their request and the core of, of their request is, um, more. Less for what, what we would call corporate accommodation or that, that definition includes as corporate accommodation and more. Just a straight up extended stay hotel. Yeah.
Quick question, and I, I didn't look it up because I was lazy and didn't have time, but the def- the difference between the definition of hotel and extended stay hotel is.
Squishy.
Squishy. That really hits what I was looking for.
Technically speaking, extended stay hotels will have like a kitchenette or other facilities. It's in, in designed to be somewhere that you stay for a longer period of time. Um, if you, uh. There's a difference in rooms and meals tax. If you stay for longer than thirty days, then they don't charge you rooms and meals tax. Um, if you stay less than thirty days, then they still do. So. This is one of those where there is a difference. There's a difference in the business model. It's sometimes hard to pin down the difference in an actual. Like building and like what does it look like? How big is it? Who does it serve? Um, there's a lot of blurry line and overlap between those two things.
And there's also historically been a blurry line and overlap in our community between extended stay hotel and what becomes apartments.
Yeah.
Um, so.
What's the one on Dorset Street, Green Mountain?
Green Mountain Suites is an extended.
Hotel and it operates pretty much like that, but some people use it for a single night.
And Larken has one too, on.
Right, there's one on, um.
Dorset Street on the.
Yeah, and then.
Extended stay as well.
Yes, and the Maple Leaf Motel sort of fell halfway in between those two. The D R B had to make a determination on what it is.
Some maple.
Uh, Shelburne Road by Queen City Park Road.
Mm-hmm. Oh.
Um, very, that's a very low slung little places there. So that one was kind of like. There was conflicting historical on that. I think it was originally approved as one and then it became another and the D R B had to kind of sort it out. It's, it's, it's tricky. We have a s- feeling that as the business model continues into the future. The line between extended stay hotel, i.e. this kitchenette and, and regular hotels is gonna get more blurry.
Mm-hmm.
You know, people have gotten really used to Airbnb's. Um, there's a whole market out there that people really like staying in them, but meanwhile, communities such as ours have been ramping down. So, you know, there will be more, we suspect interest in the world in the coming years. Um, we've seen some in. Bigger cities where overnight hotels have a kitchenette because that's what people want and they're willing to pay a little bit more.
And a separate bedroom.
All of a sudden, the definition gets really blurry.
Yeah, and some facilities will have both, like, you know, you'll have. Twenty hotel rooms of those two queen beds and a bathroom, but then there's a whole floor that's, or two floors that's suites, that's a bedroom and it has a little kitchenette and a coffee maker. And a little, you know, and a stove or something, like, they can always, they can even be in this, different levels of room in the same building. So the line between those two things is, depends who you ask. It depends if you're a tax person, if you're a builder, if you're a hotel owner. If you're a zoning person, like, everybody will give you kind of a different definition of those things.
So, what's, what's the new definition of corporate accommodation? It's, it's hotel extended stay now?
No, so I have, I have made no change to the draft, um, corporate accommodations definition. Um, I am not sure it is necessary because it doesn't sound like that's what OnLogic wants to do anyway. I had sort of written that as an opportunity for businesses to have that sort of very limited accommodation on their site, um. Their letter makes it clear that they want something more than that.
Well, I didn't see the other, uh, the other memo from them. I had made a note that accommodation is provided by a business for the temporary accommodation of employees, trainees and customers. And then, do we need that statement about it's provided as part of an employee's compensation? I think that's, you know. Not required in the definition.
So that is, that is how I had limited that definition to be specifically housing, temporary housing for corporate employees. Um, and trying to write that definition so that it was more limited than. An extended stay hotel or, or hotels in general, um, with the idea that that was what they had been, that OnLogic had been asking for. And had told us that the market, um, for businesses had, had sort of said, like, this is something that would be helpful for the modern business. Um, after talking to them, um, and, and them sending their updated letter, that doesn't appear to be the case anymore. So that corporate accommodations definition may not be necessary at all. We can cut that, we, it's possible, we may cut that whole thing.
We, um.
So, I, I, and, well, and you're saying that they were asking for more.
Right, so what they're asking for is, it's in the letter.
I didn't see the letter.
Okay.
It just came out by email.
This morning.
That's why I didn't.
Today.
Yeah, about nine o'clock this morning.
Emails are.
They essentially want extended stay.
Email.
Yeah.
That's what they would like.
Cause they think it would serve.
Yeah.
Not just them, but a lot of other people.
That was why I was asking about the definition between hotel and extended stay, how much.
Right, so the current draft had, had taken bed and breakfast, hotel and extended stay hotel and squashed them together into accommodations. But then pulled out corporate accommodations as sort of a di- you know, slicing it a different way into corporate housing. As a, or corporate temporary housing as a subtype. Um, it sounds like that way of slicing it was not something that's helpful, um. Or that fulfilled exactly what they wanted. So I think it's probably something that we don't need and then we end up back in the place where. You know, we just have, would have one definition for accommodation, but we don't necessarily need to. But again, the blurry line, it makes it very hard to write.
Okay, so we did, uh, we do have a letter in here from, um, Tom Bailey in the Economic Development Committee and you're here.
I'm E.
Yes.
To, I, I'd like to s- reference a couple of things, um. One is, um, the discussion about somehow it being fuzzy. Uh, the need isn't fuzzy. We currently have businesses, including PC Construction, where Nicole, the rep, the VP, um, and she's on our committee. They routinely send people to Williston, uh, to the extended stay for exactly the same kind of thing. That OnLogic is looking for. And frankly, if it were in, uh, if it were in Tech Park, they'd send people there. Cause it's very close to where they are. Um, so in other words, this is not an unusual business need and I don't think it's that blurry. Uh, the, um, the, under the, the city definition currently, as I understand it. Is a six month's limit, so it doesn't really become an apartment. Um, and particularly proximate to, you know, this one's, what OnLogic is proposing, proximate to business. I should point out though, that, and I haven't seen OnLogic's nine o'clock this morning letter. I actually talked with Jared Levine yesterday, assuming. Was the one that submitted it, but, um, and I also talked with Mike Biama, who works for. Rearch and he's basically the landlord of Tech Park. Um, um, and he, but we reached out quite a bit beyond the, beyond, uh, OnLogic when we opined. Um, uh, because we wanted to be sure that we were actually being responsive to a need. Uh, it's, you know, the way we kind of approach things in the Economic Development Committee anyway. Um, I noticed, I requested two changes to the, um, to the hotel extended stay definition. Because, um, I don't want it to limit the use. I mean, I can't think of a reason why you'd really wanna limit the use, except perhaps. Times or it wouldn't turn into an apartment or something, but otherwise, um, it's what the, what a business would wanna use it for. Um, and, you know, they know what they want. Um, and it does, from a zoning perspective, I don't think it changes much, I mean, in terms of the city's interest. Um, so I would just suggest this be done just flexibly. We also delved into two other areas. One is that we kind of referenced in the back about proximate to the gym and health clubs. Um, I talked to somebody else who worked for OnLogic. Part of the reason he went there, well, I would say part of the reason. Something that attracted him was that Planet Fitness is there. And that, uh, the coffee shop was over there. And, uh, so all of this was located nearby.
Daycare.
And daycare.
Well, a- absolutely. Um, and it's, it's relatively proximate to businesses. Um, and it should be, you know, if a, frankly, if a business wants to build a proximate childcare center to it. I would say right on, every place they wanna do it, uh, because, uh, there's, it, it really accommodates the employees so much. And should reduce price and everything else. The only place I've ever really seen that done with corporate, where the corporates bought in completely. Was, um, was Vermont, um, Information Processing up in Water Tower Hill. And they started out with one and now they've actually expanded, so all four of their new building is, uh, daycare.
Was there? Wow.
Is it for employees only? They also, believe it or not, having for accommodations, they have a clinic across the road that's healthcare for them. Um, for their employees. Um, and so it all ties in with their insurances and all of that stuff. I, I haven't seen anybody else go to that limit, um, but, um, but those kind of accommodations shouldn't be restricted. I don't think, certainly not in Tech Park. Um, and I think clinics, it's perfect. I mean, it's relatively proximate, except for the fact that there's only a walking bridge, but it's relatively proximate to Tilly. And, uh, it should be there, you know, assuming that the company wants to go there, uh, you know, a clinic wants to go there. Um, it supports that need and accommodates the corporate need as well as the public. So I can't think of a reason to restrict it. The area that we didn't delve in too closely. Was the other end of the market. Uh, I guess what I refer to the Vermont construction part of it. Where they, of course, ended up with what was like a military, you know, the one I went to basic training in, a military, uh.
Barracks.
Well, you know, um, just beds and barracks and the whole thing, uh, that they tried to do out at the fort and then got called on. Fort Ethan Allen got called on, of course. Um, um, so we didn't really delve into so, uh, whether that kind of. Um, that kind of thing, which would sort of be a, you know, a business extended stay maybe. Um, as in down behind the airport, where you have a bunch of businesses down there. And somebody or two or three might get together and say, God, we have a terrible time getting our workers and they'd be. Blue collar workers, um, and it would be a good accommodation to do that. So I, it's not that that's not worthwhile. But we haven't, I'm, I'm just saying, we haven't done our homework on it yet. I mean, we haven't reached out. And the only thing I'd caution the planning staff to, is to, and I granted, there's a, you know, you're out straight. With work the way you are, but, um, the businesses that, you know, other than OnLogic or that just need to, that, this is. Whatever you're gonna, restriction you're gonna apply, make sure they're in the room. In fact, you know, the planning commission should probably do that as well because. That's how you make it so at least it's, it accommodates so, something that'll work, let's put it that way. I've talked too much. Any questions?
So, can I ask you, do you think this letter from OnLogic is reflective of the other businesses you've spoken with?
I haven't, I saw a draft.
Oh, you haven't seen.
And I haven't seen this morning.
No, that was just. No, that was just when I sent it to them. You received the draft. You received this email directed from Jared at two o'clock yesterday.
Okay, then I saw. It was it was it wasn't signed or it looked like.
Oh, well, that's that's what.
So is it is that reflective of what you've heard from other businesses? That's what I'm trying to.
Uh yeah, I think so, although this is specifically what on logic wants to do.
Well, I I know, but it's a separate extended stay. They're not talking about building it themselves.
Well, no.
I don't think they're saying we want permission or have have zoning allow something like that to be built at Tech Park, which everyone can use.
Which may be on their property or maybe on another property, maybe run by them, maybe run by somebody else. That's what they're asking for.
Yep.
That's right.
They're asking for the use to be permitted.
Yes.
Yes, and I would I wanna know if the use that they're talking about is what the Economic Development Committee has heard from other businesses and not just have this on logic.
Oh, sure. Yes. I mean, there's certainly a demand for an extended stay for exactly the kinds of things that they'll accommodate. Um I've been following the tech hub as well. I you you don't all know what that what I'm referring to? Okay, um and of course, they are would if those facilities get used, they'll be in Tech Park, they'll be in the main building where UVM has a space. Um and then they'll also be over in on logic. That's where the test facilities will be, but the people that'll be working at them will need exactly the same thing. And rather than have to go twenty five minutes out to Williston for an extended stay if they're gonna be in town for three weeks or a month. Um wouldn't it be great if it was there?
When when we've been thinking about this subject, there there's nothing incompatible about a extended stay hotel or a restaurant or whatever in a place like Tech Park or Meadowland. They're completely compatible uses. The um residential might be a different category and that was called out by by the Economic Development Committee. We agree with that. I as you wrestle with this question, to me, there's two things for you to be considering. One is the and and I don't have a right or wrong answer, just considerations. One is that the land resource of our commercial industrial areas is a limited resource. So as we think about um what uh i- if if one type of thing goes in, um that is taking up a space that you know, eventually will run out of land for uses that are incompatible with being near residential. So, you know, as you consider more things being allowed in this area, they are supporting uses and that makes that can make sense. They're also potentially consuming land in one of the handful of areas where you don't allow housing. And so it's sort of protected for those uses. Um a secondary consideration um that may be more of a scale question than any than anything is the question of drawing non-intended consumers or users to an area that you didn't necessarily want to. So for example, in here, uh it talks about small and maybe medium sized uh consumer facing commercial. If you allowed for a large consumer facing commercial, you might get loads deciding to show up in Tech Park. And that might not be what you were looking for, when really what you were trying to do is support. If a low shows up there, that is a big traffic generator. Um and so thinking about, you know, where are you drawing the gravity in the city? And so thinking about scale in that sense or in terms of um you know, I don't think one hotel is gonna make or break in the city, but it would sure be, you know, we have an area where we have a sort of a focal area of hotels around city center. So those are some of the considerations, but I don't know that there's a there's necessarily a right or wrong with any of them.
And I I would agree with what Paul said um with the corollary that GBIC, I know, has done mapping of um industrial or commercial industrial parks in Chitting County and they're really hard to build. You don't just say, oh, we're gonna put one here. Uh it's usually a multi-year process to try to get one going. And there are none in process right now. Um and so it's a limitation. Um I think the problem is you need the amenities. I mean, you you need the amenities around the businesses of the businesses aren't gonna be there and they're not gonna thrive. We won't get the the talent, the employees that we want. We won't get the workforce. So it all has to kind of come together.
Yes, um Tom, I guess my question for you is um like did it did the discussion come up that like a hotel in city center would not be able to support like Tech Park area? Like like is that just too far away and?
In city center?
Well, I'm just thinking like, um, you know, we're really trying, like, I'm just thinking like when I travel for business.
Yeah.
Like, I don't necessarily wanna be out in an industrial area. Like, I wanna be somewhere where I could like go to a restaurant and like get coffee in the morning and like, like, is there like, is there a reason that?
Yeah.
Like, you know, someone who's working at Tech Park wouldn't wanna stay in maybe a part of the city that's, I'm not saying I'm opposed to extended stay at Park. I guess I'm just thinking like if we say yes, hotels can be in Tech Park and then all of a sudden it becomes a whole bunch of hotels and not industrial.
I don't, I think the market would take care of that. I I I can't imagine that it's suddenly gonna become a hotel area. It's not near anything except those businesses. If there's hotels, the airport's the place. That's the, you know, that's where it should be. That's why all the businesses are in Tech Park, the proximity to the airport. Uh I mean.
Right, a hotel would be also in proximity to the airport.
They would. They would.
The same thing.
But anyway.
I I just wanted to do a counterpoint. I don't think that is the same guess. My my thinking is somebody's gonna stay in city center and is here to do recreational things in the city. Somebody staying out there is here there. Do a course on logic for a week.
Yeah, no, I agree. I guess I guess I'm just thinking towards like, how do we, how do we adequately protect that area for the industrial or manufacturing types of uses that we're really trying to make sure we still have? Without all of a sudden just having all of these other things come in, because I do agree, like, we wanna make sure there's coffee shop and somewhere to get lunch and you know, gym um.
They're already there.
Uses, but.
They're already there.
Right, those are already there. So do we?
Can can we change the strength of the definition of extended stay hotels to differentiate it from regular hotel? I mean, I don't know what the is that a?
I mean, or only allow one? Like, we were just talking about this with gas station. How do we?
Have a limitation.
Just make sure we're not like messing up the industrial area by introducing, you know, things that are gonna replace it.
I think the other example that was brought up was actually an interesting one, you know, because it's like just Tech Park is it may not be unique, but there's a much more um a place which is Ethan Allen Drive, which is down behind the airport. Which is directly adjacent to Country Club Drive and the residential area that's right there and the two are separate. But they're they they pump right up to each other. And, you know, those, there's a lot of businesses down there and they probably are a lot, well, there's one big construction firm too. Um quite a few electrical, there's a lot of businesses down there. Yeah, and, you know, that to me is probably a more interesting case of how do you bring in worker housing? You know, how do you create worker housing um for a location like that, which is is already residential, right next to it? Different, you know, it's very suburban, but but that area could support housing and we don't even talk about that area because it's kind of separate from everything and we think who would wanna live there? But on the other hand, it might be very desirable as a place for people who work in that right nearby to be able to to be able to have a place to live there and it probably wouldn't be as fancy as, you know, something in Tech Park. It might be something more basic, which is exactly what everybody says we need.
Right, but that's not a Tech Park or anything.
It's not Tech.
That or an industrial park. That just is.
It's a lot of individual businesses.
Grew up, there's also some.
But there's a lot of businesses that probably could potentially say, hey, we could use some worker housing here.
So I think we're definitely.
But if we if we only had a place we were allowed to put it.
Yeah, I think we're not talking about. Let's stay on.
We're not thinking about worker housing here.
Well, we should be talking about it in a different time.
At a different time, it's definitely.
But but we should be talking more about it because I don't think anything we ever talk about here has anything to do with the biggest need and that's worker housing. No, low lower income worker housing, not the hospital, not the, you know, not the university.
About that another time.
Yeah, and I think we should put it on the agenda for another time because it's 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 certainly in the affordable housing category.
Yeah, but this is very different from affordable housing, so I think.
Right, this is corporate related.
Although I I I think the planning commission does talk about trying to um enhance or or promote affordable housing with a lot of our regulations. So I I I guess I would argue that we we never deal with it. Um we haven't solved the problem, that is for sure. And there's still kind of a missing middle that um.
Well, there's a missing low end is what it is.
So we're gonna stay on the extended, like this is.
That without rabbit hole.
This is just a very specific thing we're.
So it would be helpful to us if if you could give some sort of high level guidance about, you know, what on logic and um as Tom describes, potentially some other businesses are interested in is having uh extended stay hotel in some form. Um we're struggling a little bit with how to define that separately from a regular hotel. But, you know, staying at a high level, what are your thoughts on its existence in some form in our commercial industrial areas or some of our commercial industrial areas?
I I think it it's important to pursue this. I I would agree that it's a need and I don't know exactly what it would look like and I if we can, I mean, maybe the market will determine that there's just one. Um I I I don't know, but or maybe no one will come in and wanna build it because they can't make enough money. I I don't know. But I do think um I've heard enough from businesses that this might very well be really helpful for them, whether it's for recruitment purposes. So yeah, they stay there a couple of days and do their interviews and get the sense of the uh community in in Tech Park.
This is how they learn to love Vermont. Comments taken.
But I I would be in favor of um pursuing it and allowing it.
Well, Duncan, you were playing devil's advocate. You were.
No, I.
You were saying the same thing a few minutes ago.
Well, I think it it's it's a necessary thing, you know, it there's certainly that niche. And I wondered if if it needs to be sponsored or something, if it's if it's if there's an affiliation of, you know, certain businesses are saying there's the need for this and that might help to control the quantity.
Because I think that's what we were originally talking about and kind of one of the original kind of asks was like, okay, if on logic wanted to have employee housing, uh would that be appropriate? And that feels pretty appropriate. I guess I just wonder if it's a blanket hotels are allowed. I just, that's hard for me to get my head.
My worry about it on the sponsorship side is what happens when on logic is ready to move to their next building.
Yeah.
And the next business that takes over says, I don't want that. And then the city gets put in a really awkward situation of having, you know, a an entity that doesn't wanna have these rooms, but they're restricted from and and we don't wanna be in a place of having thirty blank rooms that can't be used for anything.
That was exactly my concern when we started.
Tom, it's like we're vibing tonight.
And um I was, I'm I'm just convinced enough by the need. I don't think it's gonna be a problem. I think that there's enough of demand and that it will take care of itself. I was concerned about it from a subdivision point of view. Because on logic was talking about building it on its own lot. And then, of course, later, if you wanna spin it off, then you you have to go through some kind of subdivision. So, you know, we're just keeping that in the back of your mind.
Well, it's a very small lot there, because when I was um had to do um a a set, not assessments, but yeah.
It's just about just about the right size to put in.
I I think so, um because the other concern I have, and this is not in our purview. It's how, I guess, um whoever owns it now, how they've made the subdivisions. And I look at the buildings there and there's a lot of land around all of them.
Yeah.
So they're not like squished in and they're not using the land potentially optimally because I guess the lots were whatever the size they were and they bought them.
Well.
I mean, so that is a concern. If one becomes a um a hotel and by virtue of how the lots have been identified, it's six more acres than they need. You know, wh- what happens then?
Yeah, so something that's sort of related to that conversation, it's a little bit, it's slightly different, but it's a similar thought is on the city plan twenty twenty four future land use map, we did have that big purple splotch that was kind of the to be determined, like mixed use. We're gonna figure out what we need because it's going, we need some like supporting uses for commercial and potentially housing and figuring out the contours of that area, which is generally the western side of of what is now mixed IC. Um Kimball Avenue to Kennedy. That plus the regional future land use map conversation um from the last couple of meetings about putting a center at the intersection of Kennedy and Kimball. Um something that we've discussed a little bit is maybe it's not something that whether you define it as hotel, extended stay, whatever, that that conversation slightly aside, we can move zoning district boundaries a bit to reflect some of that's planning that we've already done in the city plan and regionally to establish areas along the Kennedy and Kimball intersection, which is within a mile or so of al- almost all of Tech Park. And then potentially up and onto Williston Road where there's some of the smaller businesses as well. Um and and allow something that is hotel extended stay hotel in that area that is already more um more built, has more facilities, has more amenities, has more, you know, I mean, restaurants, poorhouse, whatever, like there's some things that are already built into that area without so getting hotels more proximate to the large lots that we wanna maintain in Tech Park for large businesses and large manufacturing facilities and other things. Keep that all large lots for for large business, but allow things in close proximity to be developed that maybe then you don't have to come all the way to city center if it's a different clientele that's going here versus there. But you are kind of meeting in the middle, like it's meeting the business needs of having something close by, even sort of pretty much walkable to bikeable. But still in a a an area that we've already designated for smaller lots and more dense commercial development.
Kind of along those lines, and this is, we do not allow accommodations in air or air industrial air.
Um unless, so so yes, but um the DRB made an interpretation uh staff concurred with uh that the airport can have a hotel because an airport function is all things related to an airport. And as long as, so the airport, the DRB did approve airport at the at the next to the parking garage because it is a common thing of airports.
So they they could have a hotel.
Yes.
Uh yes, because it fell into the definition of a ho- of an airport, just like skinny pancake. Is it a retailer? It's part of an airport in that in that context because it's just all.
But then we didn't call that out in the in the anywhere in the literature, though, did we? It it is.
You mean under the airport thing?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there was any.
Aviation, uh airport facilities is kind of an umbrella.
Was the catchall.
Yeah.
Just like the parking garage, I guess. They also.
Yeah, parking garage, hotel, the little retailers and the restaurants that are inside, um stuff like that.
We didn't specifically say hotel was was one of the uses, though.
No. So we also didn't say that, you know, aviation mechanics are are not. You know, we didn't call out everything intention, like what's hard is if you write a list of here's all the things that are included, then the implication grows that those are all the things that are included. Then the implication grows that those are all the things that are included.
Right.
If you put a couple of general things, and then you say, and similar uses or something like that. You sort of draw a bigger bubble that you can say, yeah, there's more argument for. This is something that's included, where if you list fifteen things, and then there's one thing that you didn't think of that wasn't listed. Someone's gonna, that, it's a much harder argument to make that it's included, because it's like, well, you could have included it, and you didn't.
Right, so like the airport also has car rentals, and the airport also has, I think. Uh, although I haven't checked in the last couple weeks, National Weather Service as a tenant. But it makes sense to be at the airport because they're like, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Paul, Engels, you?
Um, I, m- my thought is that, uh, you know, we had the discussion a while back about, uh, uh, restaurants and coffee shops and things and. Um, and I think that we, um. You know, uh, when the original commercial industrial, um. Land development regulations were written, I think we just didn't think so much about. You know, where are people gonna have lunch and, you know, things like that, so I, I see the. Uh, the hotel is being on that order, you know, that we just kind of. Need to recognize the human needs of businesses in the, uh, you know, in the, uh, commercial industrial areas.
I guess I'm not exactly sure how to wrap up this discussion, or if we need an answer tonight, we did have some questions in there, um.
Paul, Paul has asked, general, did you? What was our feedback?
Oh, yeah, I think we gave the general feedback, we're interested in generally pursuing this movement.
Enough to give a couple of ideas to how this could go, about either a geographic one or a scale limitation or a. Frequency limitation or some.
I just, some way to address this identified need, whether it's in the parks or close.
I'm also hearing, and not totally unfettered.
That was, that was my comment.
I guess that's what I'm.
Oh, oh, for sure.
Hotel, that was, yeah.
Personally, I would discourage having a company. Who is really good at doing whatever they make, then decide they're gonna become a hotel. I, 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 I just think that's a different business. And that we should think about that.
Oh, that was extremely helpful, thank you so much, and pass on thanks to the committee.
Suggest two things, one is, if you're gonna do much for the Tech Park, bring Mike Byalma in.
He already sent me an email today.
Yeah, and he will, uh, he'll be very helpful, uh, he used to be on our committee, but he moved to Shelburne.
I see.
Unfortunately, um, and, um, if you wanna tour OnLogic, um. Take the whole, the whole, uh, planning commission out there, I'm sure Roland will make a plan.
Great, we really appreciate all the reaching out you did.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
So we have, uh, one more item on the agenda, the technical amendments. Minor technical.
Technical amendments, yeah.
Have to get into it, it, we know it was all in here.
Yeah, so, just to go through it for a minute or two, um. There's a handful of typos and correct references, formatting issues, things like that, that we're, um, proposing to change. There's also a handful of things that I've listed that, um, are required, uh, to change, either because they are conflicting with state statute. Or our development review staff has said, we need a definition for this, or, you know, things like that, so there's a few things. That fall into that category. Um, and then a few that Paul or I or, or Nick, um, have also identified as, as little, little holes and little things to patch up. Um, there are a couple of things that, uh, we have recommendations on, or at least, you know, I have recommendations on, but. Do require a little more thought from the planning commission, so those are those three, three, yeah, three dots under, um, policy decisions required. Um, so I guess, because we're at the end of this meeting, if there are any questions that I can clear, anything I can clarify about those three. Um, decisions, I'd be happy to clarify that, but we don't have to necessarily land on a decision about those things. Today unless you all agree and you think it's, you know, you all land on the same decision. So the first is, um, updating the residential use and business types to reflect that small numbers, one to four. Units that are of residential units that are inside an otherwise commercial building, um, are considered mixed use and are not. Single family homes or something similar, just because there's one unit doesn't mean it's a single unit, um, dwelling. That's the first, um, it's cause we have had that kind of request, where there's a, a commercial building or a commercial, you know. A small, a small strip mall, and they wanna add, they've space to add two apartments on the back or something, and there's been question. About whether they're allowed to do that or not, cause like, is that a duplex? No. Um, the second is allowing ADUs to have basements, um, there, there are limitations on the size of ADUs. But currently accessory structures are not allowed to have cellars or basements, so. Accessory structures of the big category can't have a cellar or basement, the smaller category within that of accessory dwelling unit also can't have a cellar or basement. Um, so that's been, um, brought to us as a request to allow these, these smaller homes, um. ADU, se- separated ADUs to have, um, basements. It's Vermont, storage, basements, and when they're limited in size, that felt like it made sense to us, and has very little impact on others. Um, and then the last thing is Rice High School with the, um, the way that the zoning districts were consolidated. Um, they ended up being, going from being allowed by a conditional use in the R four to not being allowed use in the LSN district. So when the R four got consolidated with the other small densities. The educational facility that kind of got left out.
Sent by the letter.
So they called us. So the two.
Separation of church and state.
So the two options are to either, um, basically return it to the way it was, which is allow educational facility as a conditional use in the LSN. Um, that would allow people to, someone to apply for a new educational facility and as by conditional use, so DRB review. In the LSN, so that's a lot of our single family home style neighborhoods, um, or potentially, by Tim. Um, the Rice High School property borders, um, HSMU, um, just one property to the south. So you can change the border of HSMU and just fold Rice High School into that district.
So I thought, where is Chamberlain? Isn't Chamberlain in the LSN?
Chamberlain is a municipal zoning district, and so it's, it's zoned at municipal because it's public school.
Okay, alright, alright, I, I did, I.
Educational facilities generally, if it's, if it's under twelfth grade, it's a private.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Is it contiguous to the, um, the other commercial zone?
Yes.
Well, that seemed to be the easiest.
That would be the easiest.
Yeah, what's, what's, what's the path of least resistance?
It's to move the doc, to move the boundary.
Cause that, that takes care of, the downside of that is that theoretically they could, you know, do something commercial, but that's already allowed adjacent. The downside of the commer- of the conditional use approach is that, who knows what somebody might propose somewhere in a neighborhood.
Right.
Right, and the DRB has some tools with conditional use, but not a lot, I would go with number two, so the risk is higher.
Number two, definitely.
Oh, you're intimately familiar with this area. Do you, it sounds like here, I've been hearing a couple of people saying, um. Change it to the higher scale mixed use, then it would be an allowed use in that zone.
Um, I'm not sure I fully understand that.
That would just be the campus, though, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, just the campus of Rice High School?
Yeah, just their property.
And what is the issue?
When the zoning districts were, districts were consolidated, they went from being allowed in the district they were in before. To not being allowed in the consolidated district that they're in now, the low scale neighborhood district does not allow educational facilities. By conditional we use, the way that the R four used to. Um, so the two options are either allow educational facility by conditional use, which opens the door to private schools being requested in all kinds of neighborhoods. Um, or Rice High School, just the next property to the south is in the, uh, high scale mixed use district. So you can just change the district to put Rice into that district, and then they're all set.
And that's Joy Drive.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Perfect, so.
The only thing I could do right now is pitch, um, extending Hadley to, uh. To Rice High School and opening up the one-way street on, at the end of, uh, Eastwood. I think that would be very helpful to Rice and to our neighborhood. But that's a subject topic.
Yep, thank you, Paul. So, it sounds like we're pretty comfortable with Rice becoming HSMU, just moving that boundary. Um, any clean and easy thoughts about the other two, small numbers of units in commercial buildings?
Basement?
Yeah.
So allow ADUs.
Finish basement, I, I think.
Yeah, I, I think the, we got a housing crisis.
Okay, so we got basement, and then I think.
Small numbers of units in a commercial building, so one through four units in a building. Calling it mixed use instead, cause there was, that's sort of the common sense reading, but there is some ambiguity in how the language is now, that you're like, you could read it as saying that's a duplex. Because it's two units.
That's like across the street, they have four little apartments.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same property.
So, in the, the triangle, uh, okay, settling top.
Great.
I think we're all set then.
The, the fastest five minutes of LDR amendments.
We're sometimes fast.
There was a question about this divided duplex.
Yeah.
And.
I had to read that like five times.
Sorry.
It was.
And I guess, the thing that I, I guess I still have trouble kind of figuring out, up to three units, it's still can fit, considered. Residential construction, right?
Under what definition?
So currently.
Commercial lenders will consider fourplex or less to be a residential instead of a commercial, for example.
Four or less, whereas the, whereas the codes require four or greater to be multi-family. What codes there are.
So this.
The multi, yeah, cause that's.
This question is very specific, um, we have two building types in our list of building types in our, uh, appendix C. One is duplex, and one is divided duplex, and they have two different minimum lot sizes. Because duplex is two units in a structure, however organized, on undivided land.
Right.
As five thousand square feet as the requirement. A divided duplex is you divide the legal interest in the land underneath the two things, so.
That makes sense.
What it, what, what it is is just, it's still, the structure is two units in a building, but the land is divided.
Okay.
So then the lot size is allowed to be smaller, because we wanted the effect to be the same. So, we just had someone in our de- development review team ask to have a specific definition for what divided duplex is.
So is there such thing as a divided triplex?
The townhouse.
Okay. But.
Oh, can be.
And it's, it could still own the property even though it's three.
Hypothetically.
Okay, that's, that's the only thing I wondered.
Okay.
Okay, then, um, hearing nothing else, then, is there anything other business?
We have minutes, right?
We don't know.
Oh, we didn't have any minutes, no.
Can prove what we don't have.
Okay.
True.
Then, we are adjourned.
Great.
Thanks, everyone, thanks, Paul, thank you too.
Thanks, Paul.